Good evening. We are recording and our virtual meeting will be starting shortly here this evening. Welcome to this virtual special Board of Education meeting. Attending a virtual meeting may be a new experience for some, so please allow me to take a moment to review some of the procedures that will allow everyone to be able to participate. When speaking, please state your name, address, and topic before beginning any comments. Some meeting participants are joining by telephone and cannot see the face or the name of the speaker as shown on the computer screen. Please mute your phone or computer microphone to prevent feedback and background noise during times when you are not speaking. There is a chat box found in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. The chat box may be used to pose a question. The name or telephone number of the person posting the chat comment will appear on the screen. As appropriate, the Board President will read the question aloud during the appropriate section of the meeting for guests that may be calling in this evening. If there are any relevant Board of Education votes to be conducted, they will be done through a roll call vote. The meeting is being recorded and the recording does include anything that is typed into the chat box. And President Johnson, thank you. It's all yours.
Thank you, Dr. Opper. We will come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Petke, if you could call the roll, please.
Mr. Seeger?
Here.
Mr. Forbes?
Here.
Mr. Holman?
Here.
Mr. Scheller?
Here.
Mrs. Petke here. Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. Johnson?
I am here as well. Thank you. Dr. Opper, can you verify publication of meeting, please?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. All right, new business. Item A, consider approval to resume district-wide in-person instruction for the previously Board of Education-approved Motive Instruction Plan, which is the 4K through 8 in our cohort groups in high school students in the AB groupings, resuming on Monday, October 26, 2020.
So usually in these instances, there might be someone who might make a motion and second, and then there could be discussion. We do have the administrative team members on this evening. If you have questions for them regarding their strategies for staffing in the event that we have some staff that are absent and or working from home.
This is Mrs. Petke. I'll make the motion so we can get going with the conversation. Take a motion to consider approval to resume district-wide in-person instruction for the previously Board of Education-approved Motive Instruction 4K to 8 in cohort groups in high school students in AB groupings on Monday, October 26.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Russ Holman.
Okay, I'm sorry. Did I just say a second?
Russ Holman.
I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing number one, resume by roll call vote. Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye from Mr. Johnson. Motion carries by roll call vote. Item B, consider approval of scheduling 4K through 12 virtual instruction weeks for Thanksgiving break, November 30th through December 4th, the break from January 4th through 8th, to mitigate the risk of community following holiday gatherings. The vote is a plus and actually a few rights of information.
We're getting quite a bit of feedback. If we can have a people mute that may help and then just unmute when you want to take the turn to talk. All right, that's much better. Thank you for helping out by muting. I can, I can hear that the recording has cleared up quite a bit. So this is a strategy that several districts are using because we know that we may be gathering together, you know, it may be deer camp, doe camp, Thanksgiving family gatherings, and then again, you know, around potentially Christmas and the New Year. Family members from out of town might be getting together. And we know that some of those instances can contribute to community spread. So a strategy that a number of districts have been discussing is the idea of doing a virtual week because the science is best we know it right now, and again, that's developing and evolving all the time, but generally, people would start to show symptoms roughly five to eight days after an exposure. So if you think of, you know, Thanksgiving and then counting out five to eight days, if we had that extra week after Thanksgiving, which is also deer hunting and then, you know, so forth, that way we minimize spread. If someone begins to have symptoms, they're at home and have time to, you know, check in with their healthcare providers and such as opposed to, you know, coming to school and then realizing, you know, I'm, I'm not feeling, you know, quite right and potentially having exposed folks at school. So in Wyegah, Fremont, they've already approved this plan, but across the county, I believe most if not all of the county schools were going to be discussing this plan with their boards. And the reason I think it's important to discuss it early is to give our parents as much notice as possible to arrange for childcare for our younger students.
So do board members have any questions or would someone like to entertain a motion?
Russ Holman here. You just mentioned it takes five to eight days to start showing the symptoms. So if we take that first week off, the symptoms may not be appearing until the second week. Would it be better to take the second week off?
Hold on a minute while I'm, I'm counting, just thinking this through.
I'm not making that suggestion. I'm just throwing the question out.
So Thursday, if, if let's say the family gathers on Thursday for Thanksgiving, you count out seven days as the following Thursday, so we're still out of school. And we're, so that five to eight days would be like the end of the next week and into the weekend, so the most like, you know, again, you might get symptoms sooner, but the gestational period, based on the science we have right now, is that five to eight. So I think the week right after, the kids are already out, so it kind of makes sense and you know, I'm thinking some of the parents may have already made arrangements. Some of them have to, of course, go to work sooner than when the, the children's winter breaks or, or Thanksgiving breaks are off, you know. We all have off from school on Friday after Thanksgiving, but many of our families, the parents have to go to work on Friday. So they probably made arrangements for their children and maybe they could just extend those arrangements if they had enough before work.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Other questions or if somebody would like to make a motion?
Bruce Scheller, I, if there's no other question, I'd like to make the motion to consider approval of scheduling 4K through 12 virtual instruction weeks following both the Thanksgiving break, November 30th through December 4th, and winter break, January 4th through 8th, to mitigate the risk of community spread following holiday gatherings.
I have a motion by Mr. Scheller. Do I have a second?
Stand for a second.
Second by Mr. Forbes. Any discussion? We will proceed by a roll call vote. Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. It carries by a roll call vote. Next meeting date, October 20.
President Johnson, do you mind if I make a quick comment? There was, there was a concern on the part of some citizens, parents in particular, that I had sent a letter out that indicated that the reassessment of the reopening of, of classes for in-person would be on Wednesday, the 21st. And there was an assumption then, the letter doesn't say the board was going to meet on the 21st, but there was an assumption that the board was going to meet on the 21st, so I just wanted to put it out there to be clear to the public who might be listening this evening that the reassessment does happen on those Wednesdays. We go through the whole process of meeting with the county superintendents and the Wapaka County Department of Health Services and checking in then with, you know, any other medical professionals, you know, we need to consult with. And we started the process of scheduling the board meeting, but it doesn't necessarily mean that all the data was in at the time in order for the board to make decisions. We were still waiting for some COVID-19 test results to come back. And as recently as a few minutes ago, some test results came back, so I, I know it's very frustrating to parents with childcare, but I just wanted to explain that we're trying to be just as quick and efficient in getting this information out as possible, and I will do another Skylark tonight saying now that, that these things have been board-approved. But I, I just wanted to say that and apologize if anyone misunderstood that the reassessment automatically means that the board is going to be able to meet that very same date because that, that's not necessarily realistic either with all of your schedules.
I have a quick question too. Russ Johnson here. We got a email from a parent, all of us board members, tonight. Can we have some clarity on that or is there anything we can talk about with that email?
I do not know if we know what email you're referring to, Mr. Johnson.
There's an email from a family about, about a test, a COVID test on their son.
There's newer information since that email and because of HIPAA, we can't discuss that. We can speak generically about the district process and so forth, but
So what is the process? What is the process?
Regarding?
Regarding the COVID test.
I didn't see the email. I'm not sure that every board member saw it because I certainly didn't receive it.
So I'm, should, I'm, I'm wondering if we need to reconvene a meeting when we know specifically what we're
Okay.
seeing about, but the, the process generally is that while a person is awaiting their test result, they quarantine along with their family members until that result is in, and then when the result is in, if it's a positive, then the, the contact tracer usually gives that person some guidance or their medical professional, if that's, if it, if the result came from a physician, will usually tell them then when they're cleared to return either to school or work. So that's generally how the process occurs in the broadest sense.
Okay.
I, yeah, I know that's kind of vague, but we follow the CDC guidelines and that's what's in the plan that the board approved. I did bring up the plan here. Let me see if I can get to that slide real quickly. I hope I don't make you dizzy by flashing through a whole bunch of slides here. Want to get to the, no, that's still not the one. Still not there. I'm getting closer, I think. Was a long presentation. I'm still getting closer, still looking for. Okay, so the stay home and monitor regarding the quarantine, these are the directions and then in the plan are links if you need, you know, the more detailed information. This one, let me put it in present mode because the printing is so teeny. And then this is, this is re-entry after illness.
I have a question in regard to the email also. Apparently, someone was involved and they had a COVID test which came back negative, but I don't know who, it was not accepted.
That's not accurate and I can't go into it because of HIPAA, but
We just, didn't we just approve that test last board meeting? The rapid test?
The CISA program for staff and their family members, the results are rapid, but it's a nasal swab test. That's not, it's not the antigen test. It actually is a nasal swab test. So a point of clarification, you get the results from the lab hopefully within 24 hours or quicker, but it isn't that rapid test. It's not like a strep test you get at your doctor's office where they dip it and you know almost instantly. It's not that test.
So the test we agreed on isn't the same test that was taken, is what you're saying? Am I correct or not?
So the testing that we talked about was something that was awful for staff members. It does not have anything to do with community members or students.
I can send you more information on the CISA 6 program for staff. So that's a nasal swab test. I can send you the information that describes the, the type of test. It goes to a lab via courier in Milwaukee and then they've said they'll get us the results in 24 hours or less, so they usually arrive at the lab around 5:00, 6:00 PM. And then they try to turn them around. They don't make calls to us after 10:00 PM though. They don't want to be getting people out of bed, so so if, if the result comes in, even though they work in the lab 24/7, they don't call after 10:00 PM, so you wouldn't hear them until the following morning. But I do believe, I, I believe I understand the case you're talking about and there is brand-new information on that, which kind of negates, I think, the earlier conversation, but again, because of HIPAA, I can't discuss specific pages with you, but I will be following up with President Johnson here shortly.
But is there a result, whether it's negative or positive? I don't want to know, but is there an outcome or not?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, there's an outcome.
Okay.
Well, what is certain to me though is unless it wasn't true that some tests are not accepted.
Well, the
Why would you even give the test if people are not going to accept the results?
The test is an antigen test. It's that quick screener kind of test where you can get the results in your doctor's office quickly. It's very good. If, if you get a positive, it's very likely that the, the nasal swab is going to come back positive. If the rapid test is negative, it's not as reliable in terms of an assurance that the nasal swab will also be negative. You do have to wait for the nasal swab to come back, but it is a quick indicator. It kind of points you in the direction of which way you're going.
So perhaps a better analogy would be if you had a urinary tract infection and you went and they did a quick dip urinalysis on you and it came back negative. However, because you had symptoms, they opted to go ahead and do an culture upon which they found bacteria and were able to properly diagnose you. So while it's a screening tool, it is not necessarily the end-all, be-all. And generally, I believe it leads to further testing to either confirm a negative or a positive.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, it really gets pretty complicated, but I appreciate your patience and and, and of course with HIPAA, we've just got to be incredibly careful to maintain the confidentiality of our staff and students and their families.
This is, I think we, and another thing in that email asked about the N95 masks. I know we provide masks, but that person was asking if we are doing anything with N95s and I don't know the answer to that one.
The answer is no, it's not recommended for people in education. A regular cloth face covering or the standard, I'm, I'm reaching in my drawer to show, you know, the standard medical type of mask that you might purchase at your pharmacy suffices for our needs at school. We've confirmed that with our medical advisor, Dr. Gettards, the Department of Health Services in Wapaka County and our school nurse. So they, they all concur that this or, you know, the face covering, the cloth type that I, you know, often wear around here at school, that will do the trick.
So, so why if somebody is in contact with somebody that's positive with a mask on and they both have masks on, are we quarantining both? It doesn't make sense. Or quarantining the whole set, then to be honest with you, we shouldn't even be wearing masks. Because no matter what, so there's, I don't know how you could say N95 mask isn't any better. I, I understand you can't wear it for long periods of time because it's, it's thicker and more evasive to things, but I, I, I don't get this whole thing. I don't.
I can have, I, I can see if Nurse Jackie or Dr. Gettards can, or, or Mr.
I've had a conversation with her already. I've had a conversation with her already on some other related stuff, so.
Okay. I, because my expertise is being a professional educator, so I, I would defer to getting you information from medical people to better explain it than, than what I could do, but we are following the recommendations that protect us, nothing, again, they, they talk about mitigating risks. There's, there's no absolute protection and they remind us of that regularly. You know, all we can do is try to minimize the spread as best possible. And I think our staff and students have done a phenomenal job. They, you know, they're doing the best they can. But that doesn't mean that they aren't going to be exposed by someone that they come upon in the community who potentially is, is a carrier and, and may not even realize it. I certainly appreciate people's frustrations. Do I have empathy for that? It's a challenge. And President Johnson, as you move into next meeting dates, we do have to reschedule curriculum as one of the members is not able to make that meeting. So I, I don't know if the group wants to take a moment this evening to try to pick an alternate date.
Yes, if we're able to. I'm not sure what everyone's calendar looks like or, or what else is scheduled. I know that Wednesday is already taken. That Tuesday should still be open, I believe, unless you had, had conflicts, that Monday was open.
Tuesday is election day, remember?
That's correct.
The, the biggest thing that happens usually in the month of November is the Course of Study Guide. I, otherwise, I don't think it's going to be a lengthy meeting. I don't know if you want to
Do it right after.
Do a short meeting before, after finance on the 9th or policy on the 11th. Because I do believe it's going to be a short meeting.
I'm not 100% sure if I'm going to still be gone that week, but I, I can also take my computer with me, I guess, too. I mean, I'm sitting in the truck right now, so. So I guess, I would say just do it whenever you guys, whatever works for you guys and I'll make sure I'm on.
So November 9th be fine, Russ?
Monday night, the 9th? Yep.
Finance committee is at 9?
Um, you could go at 5 o'clock or you could go at 7 o'clock. There isn't much right now slated for that agenda other than usually in November, you're approving the Course of Study Handbook for the high school, which allows them then to start scheduling, students start choosing and scheduling their courses for next school year, which I know seems early, but that's, that's the process. I mean, it really takes that long, so.
Yeah. Would 5 o'clock work, Russ and Luke?
5 o'clock on the 9th?
Yeah.
That would be fine with me.
Yeah, that's fine.
All righty, wonderful. I will send out an invite then.
I have another, the board retreat. We had made it for 5:30 because I had an appointment. They called yesterday and they rescheduled me till December. So if anybody wanted to meet at 5 o'clock rather than So if anybody wanted to meet at 5 o'clock rather than 5:30, it doesn't matter. I just wanted to put it out there.
I'm flexible.
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me one bit. I, I just wanted to put it out there. If they wanted it earlier, just so everybody gets up early in the mornings as well.
So it's usually it's to Russ. Johnson are usually back by then, Russ? No problems?
Yeah. Yeah.
Otherwise, either way is fine with me, so.
I'm fine either way as well if, you know, I mean, if we wanted to move it up, it certainly wouldn't hurt my feelings. We may want to touch base with Tony though and, and see if that works with his schedule as well.
Okay. Should I tentatively slide it to 5 o'clock and, and then see how that, excuse me, let's see. That meeting was going to start at 6 o'clock? No, wait a minute.
We split it to 5, see if that would be acceptable to him or not.
Okay. I will give that, I will give that a go. I'm in the calendar screen right now.
All right, so next meeting dates, October 26, 2020 is our annual district meeting at 7 o'clock. That is going to be held in the elementary cafeteria as well as virtual. Board retreat is the 4th and that's looking at potentially having the time changed. Curriculum commite, committee was then rescheduled for the 9th, correct, at 5 o'clock. Finance is also the 9th at 5:30. November 11th is policy at 5. November 16th is a regular board meeting at 7 and November 17th is building and grounds committee at 5:30. So we would be looking for a motion to adjourn, please.
Stand Forbes, motion to adjourn.
I have a motion by Mr. Forbes. Do I have a second?
Russ Holman, second.
Second by Mr. Holman. Any discussion about that adjournment? Hearing none by roll call.
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Holman? Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke? Mr. Scheller?
Aye, aye.
Mr. Johnson? And an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries at 6:02 PM. Thank you all very much.